It is 6:30. Are there any agenda additions or deletions?
I think maybe the art and community grant addition can go right in under the rec section, too.
So we're going to be adding the art and community grant under the recreation section.
And that, that's that budget that I put in front of you.
Yeah.
She'll be talking, Shane will be talking about the excess funds from that grant.
Okay. Great. So we do have one addition?
Yeah.
Minutes and pay orders.
I'll make a motion to go over the, you want to start with pay orders? We'll do minutes.
I think we'll do minutes first, so I think you can't, yeah.
Oh, I can't do it because I'm not here.
Right, exactly. So, is your motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Please look over the meeting minutes of January 20th. Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
And I've stayed.
Road Commissioner.
Pay orders.
Please.
Can I make that motion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I skipped over pay orders. Pay orders.
No, you weren't here either, no.
I'll make a motion to go over the pay orders as of February 4th, 2025, totaling nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-five cents.
The amount you said was nineteen?
Fourteen, it's the new one in front of you, Justin.
The new one, that one, yeah, it says nineteen here.
New one is nineteen, your one was fourteen.
Okay.
Right?
So the old one, yes, the new one is nineteen, yes.
Okay, yeah, so nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty and thirty-five cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please look over the pay orders. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I guess we're going to...
Road Commissioner.
Road Commissioner, report.
Well, as you know, the weather's been kind of rocky, so not only they've run a lot of hours, they've run a lot of material through us this year. So, so far, no major breakdowns, a bunch of little ones. But other than that, things have been going real well down there. They've had a couple hoses break, but other than that, I don't think they've had anything major at all. I just talked to Steve on the way in, because I told him he's probably going to have to come in because dirt roads are getting slicker already. But it's, I, I think they're going to use up a lot of the budget this year for sand and salt.
For what?
Sand and salt.
Sand and salt.
Yeah. They've, I think they've put down more this year than they did all last year already. Yeah, dusties, basically, is what it amounts to. They did get, what, four, three, four inches on Saturday, Friday night, but that's it.
Yep.
So, but other than that, I don't think there's any issues down to the garage that I saw. I didn't get the, he was there last week.
He mention anything about losing the pin out of either the plow or one of the trucks? I found a, found a pin in the middle of the road, about that big around, about that long. I figured it had come out of one of theirs.
Um, no, they had a little tailgate issue, but...
Maybe it's pinned out of the tailgate.
No, tailgate pins are solid.
Oh, okay. I just found it, I got it at the house, I forgot I was going to bring it tonight, but...
Yeah, no.
Well, it's too big for...
State, or state, anybody.
Well, no, it was, it was on Cook Drive, so...
Oh!
It was up, right, right the end of my driveway, I know it's not mine, but...
Oh, okay.
And I figured it was too big for FAS, you know, coming into a big pen.
Well, it could be a plow frame, I don't know. They hadn't mentioned anything like that.
I got one, I finished one. I'll, I'll deliver it for you.
Yeah. But other than that, other than the steel, the building roofing thing to talk about, I don't know what that...
Before we do the talking about, um, the, I just lost my train of thought. Before we talk about...
Sand shed?
Yeah, the sand shed. Um, let's talk about the certification of compliance.
Certificate of compliance to, uh...
Yes.
It's just something you do every year, the road and bridge standards.
Oh.
It's the same, it's the same document you've just read adopt each year since 2019, was the last time V-Trans updated all their standards, and each year you just have to annually adopt them.
Yep, so...
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, let's talk about town garage request for proposal. We have, uh, what is this, that's in front of us.
Todd Galliano, I gave him that.
Yes.
Oh, did they come back?
Construction.
He gave me another price?
No, you didn't get it?
No, I, well, it might be in my...
Yeah, I sent it to you, but let me see, I'll let you print it out again.
This is the updated estimate.
I haven't looked at it over the weekend, so...
Okay.
If it's in there, I miss it.
Went down fifty thousand.
What's that?
Went down fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's not possible.
I know.
It's something left there.
Four forty-four.
That's four forty-one.
Four forty-one.
Four forty-one.
That's not possible.
We should, we should wait a couple of years and ask again.
Yeah.
It's, uh, not helpful if there's nothing to compare it to.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's...
Well, this is just an estimate.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, but, that's, that's one estimate.
That's right.
I've got a building, I got, I was, I've had, I've dealt with three people, and I've only got one to answer me back.
Well, this will need to go up for an RFP anyway, so there's going to be people who will bid on this?
Yep, oh, yeah.
There's no way we can fit that, one hundred and fifty feet by sixty in there, eighty, no, what, one fifty by seventy-five? Take up the whole yard.
Yeah, I would, I said, this guy had a sixty by one twenty.
I think what we should want to add now is sixty by eighty.
This is a one fifty by seventy-five.
Yes, way too big.
I'm printing out here, so I don't get that.
Remember, we're pushing, we can push that back.
But it's one...
Well, we don't need something twice as big as what we got.
But we're going to incorporate the salt in it also.
Yes.
You don't need a...
That's got to be close to a hundred now, isn't it?
I thought it was fifty by a hundred.
Okay.
I, I thought we measured fifty by a hundred.
What, to combine the two sheds?
The shed, no, no, no.
That's what's there now.
Just, just, just the shed that's there now. I, don't quote me on that, I, I measured it, but I don't remember what it was.
This estimate's for a one fifty by seventy-five. With ten by twelve concrete frost walls, exposed to a height of four feet, and twenty-two feet dream walls, three sliding doors.
That's, that's eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five.
No concrete slab, interior finish work, utilities or insulation included.
And he went down from the price before.
What was the price before?
Four ninety.
Was it four ninety? So four forty-one, seven fifty-one.
What we have there now is eighty by sixty. And that equals four thousand, eight hundred square feet. One fifty by seventy-five is eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet. We don't need a building twice as big as the one we got.
Well, originally, we, we originally, half our sands outside to start with, every, forty feet of that, roughly.
Yeah, before, before we had the sand shed, it was all outside.
Oh, I know that, Rob, I know that.
Would you say, is this, is this an appropriate size?
I like what you say, one twenty by sixty, that would, that would fit in there.
That'd be seventy-two thousand square feet, and, uh...
Yeah.
We really need to measure and lay this out.
This is the one fifty, seventy-five by one fifty?
Yeah.
So this price before was three fifty-nine?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
He went up a hundred thousand.
Okay.
I thought, that's what it was.
For the same size, Sandy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Also, this was the size that was proposed before?
Right.
Okay.
I'd say we added probably a hundred thousand dollars in foundation to that.
Found, the, the foundation part, that's what I'm trying to break down here.
Did you break it down, um...
Yes.
He's got a hundred thousand in con, what do you have in concrete before, Sandy, can you look that up? He's got ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand in it now.
Eighty-nine.
Oh, no, that's, excuse me, that's roofing.
No, for the whole foundation, he's got a hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
I must not have that page, I don't...
On the back.
There's on the back.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's on page two. Yep. So for the foundations, one thirty-seven...
He's awful cheap on that steel building.
Compared to like what you were saying about one that's half built, that they're just trying to...
That's right.
Yeah.
Concrete wall, yes...
We don't need doors, do we?
The whole concrete is eighty, ninety-six thousand.
Ninety-six, so he went up forty thousand on his concrete. About forty, forty-three thousand.
Is there need to put doors on the front of that? Not to nickel and dime it, but...
Well, no, probably not, it would keep the, you're not, they're not going to slide them open and chuck loads off.
I was going to say, they're going to stay open ninety percent of the time.
So what's, the doors, where I saw the doors?
The doors, that knocks four thousand dollars off.
Do need the openings, just not the doors.
Right.
Well, it looks like these are doors.
Sliding doors.
Yeah.
Yes. Sliding doors.
So, probably ought to come up with the, the exact size that we want to put in there.
Yeah, because everybody needs to quote apples to apples, you guys.
Yeah.
So if we can...
So if we, if we...
We need to go down and measure that exactly.
Right, we already said that same thing.
I measured, I measured, it's eighty by sixty, the one we got now?
I thought that was a hundred by, fifty by a hundred.
Fifty by a hundred?
Yeah. I may be wrong.
So we need an exact measure.
Right, we do, and placement where it's going to go.
Yeah. Because we got to stay a twenty-five foot buffer off the...
Off the tracks.
Off the tracks.
An exact size and placement.
Yeah.
And what about our, what about our setback from the property line, are we going to have to...
I don't know how that works.
Variance on that?
That's, you'd have to talk to...
You have to talk to Erica about that.
On that, but you, you've got to also remember that state wants this raised four feet.
Right.
So that means you've got to deal with...
Well, they're...
Slope toe on the back is not so bad, that can be fairly steep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we can push that as far back as we can push it.
But the front toe has got to be...
Well, I'll just take...
You can't have it too, too much with toe, because it's going to come right out into the garage doorway.
That's, that's the whole issue.
Yeah, it's got to be fairly, you know, whether they...
What would, over the half, you've rolled that and put that over next to the garage.
Does the town own that?
Right, no, not behind the garage, town, I think town owns that, but you pull in to the backside of that garage and facing the shed now. So in other words, it would be between the garage, you know, that, where you, we drove through during the flood there, where you...
Yeah, behind the rescue building.
Behind the res, right, fill in that gap with a salt shed, face it towards the existing...
Yeah, line it with the doors that are there now.
Yes, put it in that way.
And, and how does that work, is, is, as far as solar panels?
The other issue is going to be...
It's always, all depends on what, where the pitch is, right? As long as that's facing...
Right, and you put it that way, the, well, unless you, unless you put it on, unless you put your doors on the east end, that won't work.
Yeah, and then you're going to have an issue with them backing in with a salt truck dumping, because you're going to have to bear ninety, back down the front of the garage and hard ninety it into the shed.
Okay. So, again, um, if we can get an exact size and placement.
Okay. We need to lay this out...
Yes.
Sometime here.
It needs to be laid out for the RFP, yeah.
So, how about if we reach out to the energy committee and see if they will maybe write up a, uh, an RFP once we come up with a size, we know what we need for a foundation.
Okay.
They seem to, we appreciate... Well, it is, it's kind of, because they're putting their solar panels on it, so maybe we can get, not their, so our solar panels.
Whoever does your steel building or prefab, you know, stick build it, will have to do the framing design, because you have to have, when you do the steel building, you're going to have to have your buttresses.
Right.
Right.
You're going to have to have a design in there.
Right. Yep. And we'll have final approval of the document before issuance.
Yep.
Yeah. So, all, anything, anybody I've talked to, the two that have talked to me, or I've talked to three, but the two that talked to me a little bit on the back, and one of them hasn't got back to them, the other one has, they're all certified engineers that do this, they're all, all the drawings come with this for structural, um, concrete work and how to put it together.
Okay.
It was a full claim.
I talked to, uh, Albert Moon Jr., you know him?
Yeah.
He puts up Morton Building.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's worth sending him a, a request. But we don't, we can't make one fifty by seventy-five.
We got to measure it, we don't know that we measure stuff.
Which is why we're going to get an exact size.
Yeah, I measured, I measured a building eighty feet by sixty.
We have to re, we got to re, make sure we have a measurement to put these up to specs.
Right.
Because wasn't one of these that Todd did sixty by...
He did a smaller version, too.
Sixty by a hundred and twenty?
Right.
I think Todd did two quotes for it.
Right, you just have to decide on what size you want.
Just decide on the exact size, and where it's going.
And if we're combining, because this is all the, there's walls inside, but is there going to be a divider between salt and sand?
No.
So they just, they just got to...
It's an open box inside.
Right, right.
Yeah, we can, because you're going to, you're going to bring sand in from the front, and salt's going to come in from the back sideways. They're going to parallel drive out and back into it.
Gotcha.
Not have to, because with the other way, you'd have two buildings articulating, or parallel with each, so you couldn't back into the other one.
Okay. Okay. So do we need any sort of motion to request assistance from the energy committee?
It's just, we can do it by consensus.
Are we going to propel the, uh, that's what we're trying to...
That's what...
We, I think, Rob, we better make, design, come up with a size first, and then I agree with you, it needs to go out to whoever wants to bid this.
Yeah.
But they also have to understand that we're trying to follow this into by the first of the year.
Yeah.
Well, that and the floodplain, so I mean, so they got to design the foundation for the, for the floodplain...
Yep.
Yeah.
Requirements, and then they, and then gives, um, you know, the steel building on top, so...
Well, I presume the engineer for the foundation is going to be the same, it's just a matter of we have to raise it four feet...
Right.
To backfill it.
Yeah.
So basically, going to pour walls on top of the ground, and then we're going to raise it, backfilling four feet inside and out.
Well, they'll dig down four, put in a, that's what, he, he had eight foot...
Yeah.
He had eight foot.
Four, yeah, originally, but he didn't know about the, the four foot elevation.
No, in the last proposal, he had eight, he's still doing eight foot walls.
Correct.
Sounded like he was going to go down four feet with a frost wall, then come four feet out.
That was the original bid, but now we can't do that. You have to fill four feet or pour it at grade and raise it up four feet.
Well, you can, you can go four feet in the ground, as long as, when you're done, you end up being two foot, from the ground, you have to be two foot over the top of the floodplain.
Yeah.
I thought I said four feet.
Or four, well, four feet above the ground gives you two feet over the floodplain.
So you're going to, if you go four feet down...
You put, yes, that'll be an angle wall.
And backfill four feet, you don't have the height clearance inside.
No.
That's the object of the four above. You have to have four foot of concrete wall showing with sixteen foot walls to get the dumping heights you need. That's why there was four above.
Okay.
So, what I'm saying is you'd have to pour on top of the ground, basically, and fill it inside and out to grade, then you still have your twenty foot of ceiling height on your edges.
So you're just going to let it just be a floating slab, or whatever they call it.
Above the barrier.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but, yeah.
No, it's going to be eight foot walls.
Yeah. But four will be buried and four will be exposed.
Yeah, the, the same thing, you've got to have four foot, you've got to have something to hold the sand when it trickles out.
Right.
Same with the salt, you can't have the salt against steel building, it won't...
Right, right, right.
What do you put there, wood?
No, concrete.
Concrete.
Yeah.
So, do we have consensus on asking the energy committee for assistance on the RFP?
I think so. As soon as we come up with a price, or a, a size.
First, we have to come up with the size.
Size?
Size first.
We need, we need a size, we need to know the state's going to make us come up four feet, we need to know our setbacks before we can size it.
Right.
Whether we have to pull off from, I think it's twenty foot.
I'll ask Erica to call you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And, well, if she just gives me a, a, or leaves it with you, Sandy, about details on what the setback is for us there, or if we can get a, you know, a...
If we can get a variance.
Variance, yeah, I want to say.
Push it back against the...
Set it over within five feet of the, you know, for the toe.
Yeah.
Wall, land, and then slope it down, you know, that's...
Well, even if we, back there, even if we, because that drop's kind of gradual now, even if we pushed it, we had room enough to push it back into that wall,
Yeah.
put your foundation in there and just kind of backfill behind it and catch your back wall.
We've got to make sure the state knows, we need to know what their elevation they're pulling for four feet above floodplain is.
Okay.
Are they using the garage floor, or are they just making an arbitrary number? I know there's an elevation that the rescue had to go by.
Right.
But where are they pulling that elevation from?
He said the floodplain there was, was twelve inches, and they recommended that, or they want us two feet above that.
It's, uh...
So you're going to come, you're going to put, that was, it's actually three feet.
Three feet.
Yeah.
So, all I want to know is where they're taking their elevation from.
I think it's from the, uh...
So when we have a guy come in, whoever digs this, comes in and we say, we're using the floor of the garage for elevation, you need to be minus three feet...
Exactly.
Right.
Off that, or four.
Yeah.
I think it's the map and the foot hazard vital, it has all the elevations there.
I mean, maybe it does, I don't, I don't... If it does, like I said, where's it land in the...
Right.
How's it land to the floor of the garage?
Yes.
We know that's not moving.
Right.
If we can get an elevation set on that...
Okay.
That's what, you know, that way, when whoever digs it, whoever comes in to do the concrete work doesn't have an issue, they know they have to stay with that point.
Exactly. That's what we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they pull, they pull elevation off a, off a G, off a GPS that gives them...
Yep.
The elevation, so it doesn't really, they don't have a marker per se, they, they just pulled it up.
But if they pull it, pull an elevation...
Yeah.
Yeah.
An elevation they have in, off their GPS...
Right.
And then measure from there down to the floor.
Yeah, yes.
Then we have our...
Then you have your...
Whether we need to go minus two, or minus three, or minus four feet...
Right.
To start, we have our point there.
We need that.
An existing point.
Yeah, we need that.
It's not picked out of the air.
Yeah, the elevation.
Yep.
On that.
We need to know where the elevation is from.
Yeah, correct, so if we can have a starting point.
Do you want to have the floodplain manager call you?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Okay. Perfect, Sandy, thank you. Okay.
He'll have a hard time getting to hold me, because I don't hear your phone.
Well, they live in Moses.
Yeah, and you still...
You know, I'll give you his phone number, I think it might be better that way.
Great. Perfect. So, I think we've discussed all the details on this?
Yeah, I think we need to get these questions answered and lined up before we go...
Once you have those questions answered, then we'll see about reaching out to...
Yeah.
For help on the RFP. Okay. I think that's it for this evening. We're going to move on to honorable mentions. We'd like to shout out Jack and Mary Ellen Ford, Michael and Jenna Keefe, Jane Brown, Mary Brown, Jean Gilbert, Virginia Marconi, Denise and Dawn Eddy, Lynn and Paul Boer, for their donations to the Boy with the Boot Fund, and Linda Mercado for donating to the Wallingford Food Show. Do we have any public comments this evening? Nothing wrong?
Don't think.
Just coming for a visit?
Public comments?
Well, I came for something else.
Oh.
Came for something else, okay?
Somebody else on the agenda? Somebody on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Visitor.
All right, wonderful.
I was waiting for you, I don't know what the format is, we've got to be quiet.
No, now's the time.
Now's the time, yeah.
You have a comment, speaker.
If you have a comment, now's the time. Yes, yes, please.
As long as you don't yell at us.
For those folks that don't know me, I'm Ron Bushy, I've lived in Wallingford since 1973, and come to make a few comments on town employees. Very good. Don't worry. I want to just let you all know that I think our road crew's doing a fantastic job this year. I, just see that's my opinion, and Artie at the dump, Jerry doing an excellent job taking care of that. So I just wanted to express the opinion that I thought we have good employees. And I'm not even talking about the town, inside the town hall here yet. I'll come to the meeting about that. So that's all I have to say, I just want to pass on some good comments about, we're lucky we live in a little town like this, that we have good, dedicated people that are doing their job. good dedicated people that are doing their job. See the, I lived in Old Pine Lane and the other morning I had to get up, four o'clock in the morning, there's a truck, I think something like that, plowing to turn around at the end of Pine Lane. And I appreciate people doing that, trying to get things done, so, just wanted to say that. Enough time, there's too many times people don't get, um, what's the word?
Recognition.
Recognition for what they do good. We always hear complaints, we never hear anything positive. So I'm here to say, I'm glad I live in Wallingford, I'm glad we have good employees, thank you very much.
And Ron, your timing was perfect, cause I just did honorable mentions and you sort of added to the list, so thank you so much.
I'm leaving now, by the way.
You can stay with us through the rest.
No, I've done this before, back in nineteen eighties, I was sitting where you guys are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Moving on, we're at the recreation committee skating rink. The UV implementation, RFP, and update on the concession stand grant application. Yes, and the restoring community through art and local.
Right.
Food.
All right, so Mark is supposed to be here, but he must be running late, so I'll try to do the ice skating rink without him. We just wanted approval to put in a small ice skating rink down at the park. Mark got estimates on the materials and thinks it would be around six, seven hundred dollars, depending on what materials we get. We wanted to get materials that could be reused year after year so that we could put in a small ice skating rink every year. So it was basically like a fifty by hundred foot large thick tarp and pressure treated boards. And then he was gonna pump the water out of the river, we need to make sure that's the de minimis removal, but I can look into that.
Okay.
And, you know, create a little ice skating rink, you see them all over the place in people's yards, lots of hockey families have them. We're thinking it'd be fun to have it up and running by vacation week, so that we can like advertise it and have a little ice skating rink down at the park for school vacations.
Where, where would it go?
We don't know exactly, you know, we haven't scoped it out yet. I know in the past, when I was on the conservation commission, we tried to do this, and it didn't work, because first of all, I don't think we put like a tarp down, I think there used to be one, and maybe somebody else knows better than I do, I think there used to be one down where the concrete is, and that's where we tried to put it. And so I think we did all the prep work, and then the fire department came with a fire truck and with their hose like poured the water, and it was really cold out, and it froze too quickly, and it just created a big mess. It was not good. So, I think there's a way to do it, we didn't do it the right way, but I think Mark understands that you have to pump the water really slowly and let it freeze and do it thin. So.
Almost to make good ice, you just keep, keep floating it a little bit, you know, one up and rough and, you know, they float it every night.
They do, okay.
Just.
A little bit.
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
Get told, Mark's out of it.
Yeah, I know Mark was talking about doing it over the baseball field, and I don't know if he was just joking, but he said like to keep the weeds away, and, and maybe he was serious, I'm not sure, but either there, like over closer to the parking area or in the concrete, the issue with the concrete is that now there's all that other stuff there, so I don't know if that would be.
Right.
You know, we'd probably have to keep it pretty small and maybe move some things around. But it's not gonna be very big anyway, you know, fifty by, less than fifty by one hundred, cause you need to have the sides, you know, so if the tarp is fifty by one hundred, it might be, you know, forty by ninety.
Okay.
Then what would we do, just in terms of like liability and something that can, did you factor in signage for saying like, use this, using this at your own risk, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think it's the same as everything else at our playground, it's all use at your own risk. Yeah, I don't know, what you guys would wanna do about that.
Do we have a sign that says that already?
Well, yeah, it would probably just wanna be, even if it's just a laminated sign that we put on a post like that says.
There's a lot of signs.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we said what they said, we talked about it like consolidating them at one point, cause there's lots of different signs that say different things, and is there a sign that just says like use equipment at your own risk?
I go back and look, I know the, like the playground does, and I'm not sure if there's just one.
I guess we can get one.
Anybody at the park, yeah, I don't know.
This might be good to have in mind somehow.
Yeah.
It sounds like a cool idea though.
Keep your, keep your tarp light in color. And also, plastic is better, cause it doesn't absorb the sun, it'll freeze quicker.
Oh, right, that's a good point, yeah.
If you reuse a dark tarp, you'll never get it to freeze.
That's true, that's true.
Especially this time of year.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So keep your tarp, if you're gonna use a tarp, keep it light, but that's why people, they put plastic down like a.
Yeah, I mean, I would personally like to start small this year and just see if we can get it to work, you know?
Right.
Because I don't wanna invest, you know?
Well, why don't you put it in the basketball court, we're playing basketball this time of year.
That's true, actually, I wonder if there's like.
I don't think.
Any negative to doing that, but it's flat, it's.
Yeah, as long as you've got something down, you're not gonna, I don't think you'd ride across any further down than it is now, so.
And we're not gonna put a lot of water.
Well, they shut off, maybe they do, they shovel it off themselves.
Yeah, so I'm wondering about putting milk and stuff. Cause it's not like they're drib, you know, they can't dribble, they can shoot. I don't know, we.
Oh, right, if we have like a thaw, yeah, it might be like a mess.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a puddle for a little while.
Yeah.
We could probably pump it back into the river.
Or you can just let it go.
Let it go, yeah.
I think, but I think that back part of the concrete makes no sense.
Yeah, I think so too, we just have to measure it maybe and see, cause like the ramp, we can't move. Um, so we just have to see like how much space is left, and if that's enough space, I think it's funny big for like, you know, just envisioning kids.
Cause no one's skateboarding right now either.
No.
What about also, or you could do it in the, the other parking lot, the gravel parking lot over on the other field.
Oh, that's true.
Well, that's a good idea.
Because that, nobody's gonna be using that right now theoretically, it's not gonna plow.
That might be a good.
Well, they have to turn around out there, don't they?
Good timing, we were just talking about where to put the ice skating rink.
I don't know.
Do you have ideas about where to put the ice skating rink, I know you talked about on the baseball field, but I don't know if you were joking about keeping the weeds away or serious.
No, no, no.
No? Somebody else for that, okay.
Field, like where the like the sign is, from the river to like the infield. Left of the line, basketball.
Oh, that might be hard, so you mentioned the, the dirt parking lot, that might be hard to pump the water, just cause that's pretty far from the river. So it would be good to be.
Close to the river.
Yeah.
And then it would drain too, you don't wanna create a pond.
For sure.
But that, that would be a nice spot too, if the water wasn't an issue.
That could be a good spot.
I think so.
So on the cement or, where did you say, next to the?
Basketball court.
Next to the basketball court, where we put in that mini soccer field last year?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, perfect, yeah.
Right there, yeah.
So are we good with rec installing a skating rink?
That'd be a really cool idea.
Okay.
Yeah. And you had mentioned when we talked about this, that Nelson had wanted one, and so we talked about maybe making a little sign saying like in memory of Mason Tiff or something, cause I guess he had mentioned over the years like wanting an ice skating rink, and we could never quite make it work.
I know.
If we can make it work.
No, I remember him.
Yeah, I remember him too, yeah.
Wouldn't it be great to have an ice skating rink?
Yeah, and I thought of all the things, but yeah, then why not?
And I remember in my hometown, I, I learned how to skate at our town skating rink that was up on our vacation field.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we'll see if kids use it, but I think it's a low investment, we do have money in the budget for adult recreation and youth recreation, and so we were gonna use that money to buy those supplies.
I think I have a pair of ice skates in my closet.
I do too, I have some in my basement.
I, I would go out and I would get, get them sharpened and go skate.
I'll go, yeah.
There we go.
Well, no popular preferences.
This time of year.
Thin, thin.
Very thin, yeah, cause if not, you'll be.
Yeah, it won't.
Uh, you'll be skating on thin ice, I guess.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, very, I found that out the hard way.
Yeah.
It'd take forever to freeze if you put like six inches of water on it.
I was talking to somebody who had built one this year, and that's what he said later, this time of year.
Just, yeah. Little bit every, little bit every night, let it freeze solid and then.
Yeah.
Be good to go.
Sounds good, all right, well, that'd be fun. Okay.
So now.
Um, so the next thing was the erosion control implementation project, just to check in, since we got that funding. Sandy and I have been working to put together an RFP for the.
Project manager.
Project manager, and then we have eight thousand dollars in the budget that was funded for project management. So we're hoping that person will then turn around and do the RFP process for the construction contractor.
So the RFP is gonna be for a project manager?
Just for the project manager, the first step, and then that person will essentially manage the RFP process for the actual contractor. So, the RFP's pretty basic and, you know, I guess Sandy would just sum it around.
Are we good with this? Okay.
So that we can do something in March.
Yeah.
What's that?
We can put that out whenever, I guess.
Right, and we'll, she'll have it, she's already worked on it, so, probably the next meeting, the February seventeenth meeting.
February seventeenth meeting, okay.
So one question I had was, in there it had a bid opening, does that usually happen at a select board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so you have to time it, so that, okay.
Exactly.
Good, so I think I had that, so that the proposals were due like the week before the first meeting in March, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So, but we can change those dates, whatever's in there, it's just what I thought would work. Yeah, so that's the next step, and then as far as the grant, you know, there's a site visit and a subcontractor agreement, and just making sure we have all of our permitting in place prior to construction, but otherwise, I feel like everything is more rare, like everything we need to do, and I think we're in a good place to get rolling on that project.
Okay.
And did, did you talk to them about the ma, of the local match, the local share? Are we now there yet?
That's the different grant, right?
That's for the builder.
The next one, okay.
Yeah, that's for the builder, the land and water conservation fund. So, did anybody have any questions about the erosion one? No?
Any questions?
Yeah, that's rolling along, I think. I don't know when it'll happen, it'll depend on when contracts are available, but the grant goes through like the end of twenty twenty-six, so plenty of time. Um, and then the land and water conservation fund, this is the one where we put in the pre-proposal, and we were selected for a full proposal. I've been trying, we've all been trying to get estimates from contractors, and we haven't had much luck.
Okay.
So I just posted on front porch form today looking for contractors.
Okay.
And I'm gonna keep asking, I actually looked at the towns list, I don't know why I didn't do that earlier, but the town has a list of contractors. There's three or four on there that I contacted one or two, but there's a couple more I can contact, but we don't need a contractor right now. What we need is an estimate to justify the budget for the grant. So we just need a local contractor to like sit down with us, maybe go over to the building and look at the plans, and give us like an estimate so that we have something, some basis for our proposal.
Okay.
So, that's a struggle right now, but hopefully we'll find somebody, Sandy and I attended a webinar about the grant. Couple of weeks ago, and it was informative, I learned a lot. Uh, one thing that we talked about was, there is a requirement in there that once this money is used on the property, it needs to be, not the whole property, but the building needs to be used in perpetuity for recreation. And I don't, you know, I think it will be used in perpetuity for recreation anyway. Uh, but that is a requirement of the grant, there is some dissolution, like clause that like you can go through, but essentially, if they're gonna invest like forty thousand dollars, they wanna make sure that like you're not gonna turn around in a year and make it like a private, you know, for profit business, so.
Right, right.
The idea is just like, we're gonna give you this money, and we're gonna say for the lifetime of the grant, which I don't even know what it is, but whatever they determine the lifetime of a building reconstruction is, that it would, it has to be used for, for recreation.
Okay.
Uh, but otherwise, do you remember anything else that was?
The only other thing was that you were gonna talk to them about the local share.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to wait until we had a, a estimate to figure out what the local share needs to be, at least because it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing. But yeah, the local share is fifty percent, but we were hoping, what I wrote in the pre-proposal was that we were gonna use the design funding from the erosion project towards part of the match, cause I think that was like thirteen or seventeen thousand, and then Ralph did the design as a volunteer, so we were gonna include that, so you can include like design funds as a match.
Okay.
So, but there will be some match on top of all of that, I think their calculation, their calculator was like messed up on the pre-proposal, so it kept calculating the match as like the wrong percentage, and it, it just made all the numbers not come out right, but I need to go back now that they fixed the calculator and like plug the numbers in, but it would be most helpful if we had an actual.
Estimate.
Estimate, because it's, you know, we can change the amount that we apply for, which was one thing I was surprised by in the webinar that we attended, like we put in for something like twenty-five thousand on a fifty thousand dollar project, so there's twenty-five thousand dollars in match, some of which is covered by the erosion control design and other volunteer work, but then some of it, the town's gonna have to cover. But we can change the budget if we wanted to, we can put in for forty thousand, we could put in for eighty thousand. So the pre-proposal numbers don't really matter so much now that we're putting in a final proposal. So, we really need an estimate.
Okay.
And that's a struggle for some reason.
Okay.
One, one suggestion that I made was to budget for a project manager, which is also allowed. I really like, especially with so many different components of this one.
Yes.
If we were to, if, depending on how much we get, but I mean, if we could get, if we're gonna do electrical and changing bathrooms and all that.
That's right.
It would be really good to have a project manager.
Yes.
And also, any work is, has to go aside with, coincide with the erosion effort, because it has to.
It, it can't happen at the same time.
Okay, but, okay, yeah, okay.
Unfortunately, I would, that would be ideal, right? But because the landed, so here's the other thing, is that we don't know what's gonna happen with federal grants right now. So, we're putting in a proposal to a project, we don't know if they're even gonna be able to fund, so that's the other thing, like if we can't get an estimate, you know, I don't know how much we bang our heads against the wall to like try to figure this out, because we don't even know, we can put all the work into like putting, putting in a proposal and not gonna, the, the grant program might not even happen.
Right.
So really, what you need is, is an estimate.
Right.
We need an estimate, yeah, but the land and water conservation fund, because it is federal money, it's a longer process, so once we put in the final proposal in April, I don't remember how long they said until we actually get funding, but it's not a quick process, cause it needs to go like up and get like reviewed and then come back down, and so the erosion control is a state funded project, so that, that one is pretty quick, but this land and water conservation fund is gonna be like a year, couple of year long process.
So it's like a mini sidewalk ground. It's that same kind of layers of.
Yeah, it's layers of bureaucracy, and like it's not gonna be quick.
Right.
So, which is fine, I mean, to get, you know, if we can get it done.
Right.
I think it's worth it, but it's, it's not gonna happen at the same time, because the erosion control project is on a timeline, cause now that they've funded it, it has like, we have like two years to finish the project. And the other one is not gonna be funded until at least like a year into the other grant, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So the timing's just not gonna work out. Just too bad. It'd be nice to just do it one, do it at once, you know, like.
Right.
October one year, close the beach, like have at it. But, it's not gonna work out. I did wanna mention also that we had some other ideas for rec projects that we were working on, or activities, we were gonna have the chess night, I don't know if that's even been advertised yet, but.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that.
We've talked about that, yes, yeah, so we're gonna be doing it at the library, but we're gonna, I think it's six Thursdays in a row, we're gonna have like a chess club for.
Oh, nice.
All ages, if anybody wants to come.
Nice.
Um, and yeah, I guess that's the only thing we have advertised so far, but we have other ideas, like once spring comes around, we're hoping to have, you know, drop in soccer and maybe basketball and.
Oh.
You know, we're gonna have a community breakfast as part of that grant in.
Yes.
May, we were, turns out it just ended up being the same day as green up day, so we're gonna talk to the conservation commission about like joining forces and maybe having bags handed out in the same place we do breakfast and having yoga early in the morning to get everybody like warmed up for a green up and.
Yeah.
Just make it like one big like town thing, uh, but we haven't talked to them yet, but we will, so. Yeah, and then we're gonna, also that grant, did you wanna talk about that?
Yes, let's talk about that.
The, the, um, the third grant is the, let's see, it's the art and community.
Wallingford, flood recovery, restoring community through art and local food.
That's it, yeah. That one, we had put like something like fourteen hundred dollars in that budget to cover the match for the FEMA repair of the ball fields, which was like the material. Uh, but we had so many volunteer hours that I don't think we're gonna need that fourteen hundred dollars, because Mark and many others from like Rutland County Little League, I mean, literally, like I don't even know how many hours they put in, but hundreds of hours into volunteer efforts. So I think that's gonna cover the match, so I don't think we need that fourteen hundred dollars, so I was proposing that we go back to the people that gave us the funding and say, turns out we don't need to spend that money, can we use it on other either flood recovery efforts or activities down there, because that's the whole idea, is to restore the facility and then get people to use the facility and recognize it as a restored, you know, facility. So the art project was done, there's that beautiful mural down in the building, we bought all the stuff to have outdoor movies, so with that fourteen hundred dollars, we were thinking about having a couple of more outdoor movies in May or June, and possibly buying a better door for that building, cause it's always
I think that's a great idea.
Getting like a real out, exterior door that like with a real frame that like locks well, and then doing something with the window.
That would be great too.
So it's not opening every week, and we're not all getting phone calls about the window being open.
Yes.
Like a shutter, yeah, like something that like really locks.
I, I, that would be, that would be great.
I mean, we could just get rid of that window thing, but like, I always wonder like, is anybody ever gonna use it as a concession stand, I hate to like get rid of it.
Yeah, it's a good structure, we might as well keep it there.
But it's a pain, that, that whole thing.
Just do something better.
It's always open, yeah, yeah. It's always open, yeah. So, anyway, do something to make it like. Oh, that's a good idea. I wonder how much that would cost?
Does that sound good to everybody? Do we check to the funding?
So yeah, I was just gonna oppose to them that we use the funding in a slightly different way and make that building more secure and have some more movies, since, cause we bought that huge projector, or the huge screen and the projector, so we just have to pay like three hundred dollars per movie for the licensing.
Alright.
So.
Sounds good.
Alright.
One thing, one other thing you and I briefly talked about is, because you're having such trouble getting a contractor estimate, is if it was possible to pay a little bit for somebody, cause there's so much time involved.
Ralph mentioned that, cause I guess we're asking a lot of people. Like, I don't know, I'm not a contractor, but he seems to think it's asking a lot for people to actually give us an estimate.
A lot of work goes into putting an estimate together.
Yeah.
Uh, being on the receiving end.
Right.
Of um, quite a lengthy, we, we, we paid for that estimate that we received, so, yeah. So wherever you.
I don't know where it comes from, I mean, I don't know what budget, you know.
Well, it's building, I imagine, right?
Yeah.
You could do it from the building fund.
You could do it from the building fund.
You could do it from the building fund.
I mean, how much could we pay though? Like, what's reasonable to offer somebody that we're willing to pay up to five hundred dollars, or is that not enough?
You think about how, whatever their hourly rate is by the, doing the site visit and then going back to the office and actually writing up stuff, so trying to figure that out. So like, I guess just looking up general contractor in Vermont.
Or you could ask for their hourly rate, rate.
Or you could ask invitation, uh, for everybody to bid on it. You don't have to award it, but it doesn't cost anything.
Well, that's what we've been trying to do. We haven't got any, any.
Well, maybe if you could give Shannon an up to figure, maybe if you give Shannon an up to figure, that way she can keep that in mind.
Even if we don't do it now, like I think it's a really great plan.
Yeah.
And parts of it, I think, are gonna have to be implemented at some point, just like, to keep us like.
Because that building needs.
It's, yeah, it's gonna need some repairs.
Yeah, it does.
And part of the plan was to fix that bathroom in the back, so then there's an actual second, you know, bathroom and proper like changing facilities for.
Right.
Everybody.
Um, and then also on that, on that point, the, um, that comment, it was really nice that they actually gave us so much feedback.
Yeah.
I was really amazed by that. I wasn't expecting that at all. Um, but the.
Oh, they did have that comment about the use of the space?
Yes.
Cause I called it a multi-use space.
Yes.
Yeah, and they said that it can be multi-use as long as it's used for recreation. So I do need to clarify with them whether the summer camp would be considered recreation, cause I don't think it wouldn't be.
The door would be open, and it's just a lean-to almost at that point, so it's.
Well, right, so if the door's open and it's just kinda like a hallway through bathrooms and changing rooms, and I was, I was just picturing that room, because the plan that we've talked about is just downsizing, like simplifying the boat situation, like, and we can talk about this later, but getting rid of those paddle boats that are huge, expensive to maintain, nobody can carry, take up a lot of space, just getting rid of them, and having like two paddle boards and two, or two kayaks and two paddle boards, or something like that, and just keeping them stored and locked up down by the water, cause that's how like people do it at a lot of the state parks. And, you know, we have the camera system down there for security now, so we could at least like try it and see how it goes.
Yeah.
But not using that so much for boat storage in season, but having it available to like the campers, like if they wanna do like an art project and maybe having like tables that fold down from the walls with like folding chairs. So, you know, if they wanna use it, or if there's a big storm.
Or just a folding, folding table that we could just put on the side, that has a nice place for it, so it sits and it's not in the way and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just something that it can be like, not just a hallway to a bathroom, but like a usable space. Um, so I called it a multi-use space in the grant, and they called out that it can't be used for anything other than RFP if they're funding part of the project. And I don't think it's an issue, but I do need to clarify that.
It looks like range is, uh, I just saw.
Where does the range look like?
I would shy away from paying the contractor to give you an estimate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because you're kinda throwing away, even if you're paying five hundred dollars, you send it out for three different estimates, you're throwing away fifteen hundred dollars. And, and the reason I say that is.
Yeah.
Only one person's gonna get that bid.
That's right.
And if you pay for that, your contractor is not going to take that, that amount off your bid. In other words.
Right.
You, it's kinda, you're, you're kinda throwing the money, what, the, the reason nobody's bidding on any projects now is because nobody has the time to do it. So if you pay somebody to bid on a project, they're still not gonna have the time to do the project.
Right.
So, you're kinda, they're gonna bid on it, they're gonna put an extremely high price on it and make five hundred dollars. Not really.
Right.
A legitimate way to do business.
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't offer it to more than one person, I would just offer it to one person to give us a, cause we just need one bid right now. Eventually, if we get the funding, we need to put it out for competitive bid.
Right.
But right now, we just need one proposed, one estimate.
You're just looking for an estimate.
Just looking for an estimate. We don't need a proposal. We just need an estimate.
You don't want a proposal, you just want an estimate.
Yeah.
If you pay somebody to give you a, not really give you an estimate on, well, rephrase it. If you can find somebody that will write you up a proposal slash RFP for five hundred dollars, that's one thing. In other words, they will look at it, say, it's gonna cost this much money, here's your RFP to send out to the contractors when you're done, an engineer or something of that sort. Then you're not throwing your money away. You get an RFP, you get a estimate for your, for your grant.
Right.
But if you start, you know, getting three contractors and paying each one five hundred dollars bid on it, you've thrown it away, because they're all gonna come in high, because they don't have time.
I feel like we've gone around and around and around, cause like a couple of years ago, we talked about hiring an architect who would've done that for us. They were gonna write the RFP and they were gonna come up with an estimate, but we didn't wanna spend the money on that. But it's like, if we don't spend the money, then we're not gonna get the grant.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we might not get the grant anyway, because of a lot of reasons, but, you know, sometimes you have to like, you have to have the documentation to apply for the grant, you know?
Right.
Otherwise, we're, you know, I'd rather spend five hundred and then get twenty-five thousand to do the project than not spend five hundred and not get any money.
But if you, but like I said, you know, not so much for an estimate, but for an estimate slash RFP.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
That way it's, you're done with it, it goes out, and then when you're ready to build, then you've got your RFP.
No, I think that's great, cause we need an RFP anyway, and I can't.
Are we good with that amount of money of up to five hundred?
So you, you have been, you know.
I haven't been getting anybody that much money.
Competitive requests for.
No. No, we've just been asking people for bids.
We're still looking for a grant.
So we don't have the money to put out an RFP. We're just asking for an estimate.
Why not?
Cause the grant, the grant application is due to mid, uh, March fifteenth. So we're just, this is just, the, the pre, the, the preliminary application, the feedback, they wanted more details on the cost of the project. So that's why we're trying to get an estimate from somebody.
I don't see why you can't just go with the competitive bid, find out who's the low bidder, and say.
Because we don't wanna put out, we don't wanna put out a bid until we know, we, we might not even get the grant.
Exactly.
And then we're wasting everyone's time.
You'll get, you'll get your estimate. Even if you don't get the grant, you get your estimates.
Who would put in a.
And if, if you do get the grant, you already, you can award one.
We can't give any timeframes though, either.
I know, we can't even get one person to come out and look at it, so it's gonna.
I don't, who would put together a whole proposal when we can't even get a bid? I mean, it's asking a lot.
I mean, if, if the funds are there, I, I would push it up to like a thousand dollars. I mean, we paid four thousand dollars for heating, um.
Right.
Design.
For the, under the oil tank, the tank.
The tank and furnace.
Alright, how about should we do up to five hundred for an estimate, or up to a thousand if we include an RFP?
Yeah.
Cause I'm thinking some people might not wanna up, write an RFP, but for five hundred, it might incentivize enough people to be like, spend a half a day with me looking at the building, Ralph.
Five hundred for an estimate and a thousand for an RFP.
If they're willing to include.
They're willing to do the RFP, yeah.
Yes.
Then you're not throwing your money, you know, away if you try to get three bids.
Yeah, I don't wanna waste people's time either, you know, cause I feel like when you put out an RFP, it's kinda like.
You know the project's gonna move forward.
Usually you have the funding and like people are assuming they're bidding on something that has the funding and.
Right, but we just don't know, yeah, exactly.
I thought you just spent two days.
I mean, and if you, if you reach out to a contractor and say, we're, we'll give you five hundred dollars if you can tell me roughly on the high end what this is gonna cost to do.
Right.
And, and they'll have their time for that. But what they don't wanna do is bid on something.
Exactly.
And they don't have time to do that project.
Right.
Cause now they're on the hook to build it and.
The thing that people might not understand is that this might not get done for two or three years. Like, this funding is that long, you know, like, this could be like a project in like twenty twenty-seven, literally.
Yeah.
So if you let whoever you're contacting know.
Yeah, we can give you a box now and in twenty twenty-seven.
We're, we're not looking for a project to be completed this year, we're looking more out two, three years in the future.
Right, yeah.
That's gonna also help them with their timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
And when you do that estimate, when they give you an estimate, make sure they look at how.
Yeah.
Two or three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, be sure that they're trying to bar for some inflation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that's predictable.
If that's predictable.
I think they do allow for some contingency, like up to a twenty percent contingency in the grant to.
Okay.
Anyway, okay, well, that's really great feedback, I appreciate it.
You're having all this trouble getting anybody to bid on it, and you go through all the stuff, and then you got the, got the grant, then you go out and nobody bids on it then. I mean, I would, I, I'd rather see you just go up, uh, for commercial and it's submitted and many people as you can.
Part of it is, is we don't even know really the scope of what the project, cause we have grand plans. We need to kinda get a concept of the price. So, to be able to fill out the RFP, we need to be able to scope it down. So we can't even put that out until we get a concept of, how much will it redo to do this section or that section?
Right.
Right.
So until we have that, we can't even write the RFP.
Right. See, that's the thing, is that like, so, what we did as a committee is we put together a whole list of like laundry list of like, this is what we wanna do, but then it's all in order of priority. So like, there's priority number one, priority number two, priority number three, and if, we might only get to priority number three, even though there's ten. You know what I mean? So like, we need an idea of like, is this a forty thousand dollar project, or is this a hundred thousand dollar project? Cause we're not gonna ask the task, you know, we're not gonna ask the taxpayers in Wallingford to pay, you know what I mean? There's only, there's a limit to what we think is reasonable to put into the building.
Right.
Even if half of it is paid for through a grant, it's still like, it needs to be a reasonable project. So, it's kind of a chicken or the egg, like we need to like meet with somebody who has an idea how much things cost, so that they can tell us like, you know, this part will be ten grand, that part will be thirty, you know? And then we'll be like, oh, that's thirty, forget it.
And when you do that, when they give you that estimate, make sure priority one is gonna cost you this.
Yes.
And have them give you an estimate for each portion of that project.
Exactly.
And the same thing with the RFP, here's the overall project, but here are the different segments and we want it separate estimate.
Right.
You know, for each, as a total, but different line item for every estimate. Only because if you can't.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to cut.
Do it all, you have to find someplace to stop it and that'll.
Right.
Help solve that problem.
Yeah, no, I think that's great.
Is there anything legally that says that if somebody writes the RFP, they can't actually take advantage of the RFP?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We're, we're paying them as a contractor to write the RFP.
I mean.
So totally separate from anything else.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have, like, we didn't get into some weird sticky situation where that they go to bid on it and then for some reason we can't actually do it. We can't let them, they can't let the.
Is it similar with, um, or the elec, was it electrical or something?
Yeah, we had somebody came in, estimated the project, and we used that for the RFP and put it out.
Yeah, it's, it's a very common practice, but I can see where you might think it's like a conflict of interest, but it's.
It, it's more the estimate versus actually writing the whole RFP. I think that's, that's the, that's the issue.
As long as it's to the scope of what they're looking for, to have done, you know, you know, you give apples to, you know, apples to apples all the way.
Right.
Down through. And I, that's where, Rob, I'm afraid if, if they send it out like you want to, to different, you know, everybody all wants, I'm afraid that they're gonna get an estimate for doing A, B, C, Z. Here, they're gonna get a project for A, D, E and F, but not the whole project. So, you're gonna end up with five or six different, too many different variables without doing a, an RFP.
And it could scare someone away though, if it's a larger scope.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
If people are so booked and you, forgive me, I mean, you, I don't know if you've seen the plans recently, it's, could be, if we could do everything, which we know we can't.
Right.
It's a whole overhaul. Where if it's, you know, within the budget, it could be more manageable for a smaller company to do.
Okay.
So up to, up to five hundred or?
Up to five hundred for the, for the estimate, and another five hundred if they wanna write the RFP.
On the building fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Now I can try to start on an RFP, I just, I'm not a builder, so it's hard to write an RFP for a building.
It's a lot easier if you can get an estimate, then you can use, even if.
Right, just.
You can just write it off, off the estimate.
Right.
Ralph helpful with this?
He is, Ralph has done the design for free.
He's done a lot.
No, but I mean, the RFP.
I asked him to write the RFP, and he said, he's got a lot going on, he said no.
Yeah.
I tried.
I mean, for, for him.
But he, he also isn't the licensed architect anymore, so he wanted us to call this a draw too, cause he like let his license expire, so he doesn't feel like he should be doing it. But he's happy to help.
Right.
Like manage the project and help us with like the design, but he's not, he doesn't want to do.
Right.
I think he's also like retired, he doesn't want it, he doesn't wanna do it.
And it's hard to, it's hard to estimate out projects when you're out of the business.
Right, exactly. He's been out a long enough.
He's also said that too.
Yeah, he said, he's like, I'm not, it's, it's not his gig anymore, you know? Let's let him be retired and find somebody to do it.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Okay. Rotary coin drop. It looks like Rotary is requesting July twenty-sixth and August second, which would be the rain date for their annual coin drop, in front of their building on Route Seven. They'll take care of all state and V trans permits. Do we want to approve the Rotary coin drop? We seem to obviously do, approve it.
I was doing, yep.
Okay.
That's for sure.
Yep. And now, our next item is the key list.
Yep.
So we all have a copy of this. This is something we do annually?
Yes.
Yes.
And so, please take a moment to look at this list.
So we're running the key for the everyday entrances and stuff?
We, I mean, everybody, we all use the code on the front door.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was asking.
Okay.
But people have keys.
Still have keys out?
Because the, the side door is the same lock, so if something happened, we could come, still come in the side door.
So I guess the, the question is, just because the whole, the whole point of, the whole point, and one focus on that is so that we minimize key loss. Are there people on this list that don't need a key and they could just use the code?
Right.
Like Jill, Sandy and, and Julie need a key for sure because they're going to be coming in every single day.
Right.
And, yeah.
And there are some people on this list who do not get keys, it looks like, or does everyone get a key?
Joyce still not a key?
Don't, she does not.
She does not.
Listen, we should even just take her off the list then, right?
Do we take Joyce off the list?
Joyce?
Yes.
Her rear?
Yes.
Yeah, she still has a key.
Number four.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
But it, oh, but it just.
It's for the front door.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think that if, you know, if somebody had a meeting or something and for whatever reason, the front didn't, the code didn't work.
Mm-hmm.
The key unlocks the tap terrace.
Okay.
So it's the same key that locks the tap terrace.
You have a handicap issue too, sure.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
All right.
But for the, for the use of the upstairs.
Right.
Right, right, for that whole thing.
Right, yeah, so you don't have to hand out keys for the night.
Right, okay.
Okay. So is everyone good with the list?
Yeah. Do we need consensus or the?
Yeah, a consensus is what?
It looks like we're good? Our next item is property tax map maintenance agreement.
Same thing we do every year, right?
Yes, it is.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
We budgeted it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It hasn't changed.
So it's going to go in, sorry.
Yeah, okay. That'll be for me to sign.
Okay.
Next item. We have the boy with the food update.
So I, Charlie and I went out, Wayne Jones explained more about what he wanted to do with the statue. It's going to be fix all the breaks and cracks. There's a lot of, a lot of cracks. And maybe with some rods, reinforce it upright, and then it's going to be filled with epoxy so it's not going to be hollow anymore. It's going to be a solid statue, which is going to be a lot heavier. Wayne thinks it really should be exhibited and not placed there. I told him it was going to go there at least for a while. And he said, yeah, I mean, it would be fine for a while, but he just thinks eventually it should be a replica put in the fountain and this may be, store it upstairs for exhibit. But, so he gave me a roughly, a rough estimate that I passed on to VLCT. They asked for a second estimate. And we did have a second estimate from earlier last fall, Leanderwood. And so I sent that along. They asked for the sheriff a report on it, which I sent that as well. So they have everything and I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Oh, but do we have the, with the three, like to make, recreate it? Are we just?
Well, that's what we were talking about. We give it back. At some point, we'll have to do a.
So we'll do the replicas?
I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
Especially if we can't move this one without a crane, basically.
Right.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Well, I mean, if it's going to be full of complete of epoxy, the thing is heavy already.
Yes.
And epoxy's like. Yeah, no, but, but we have to bring it in in the winter anyway.
Yeah, so because you're going to have to, somebody's going to have to create a molden for it.
Yeah.
Or, or you do a 3D scan and then be able to make them.
Is capable of doing that?
I don't know anybody personally.
But, I mean, just saying, I don't, I don't know anybody that's around here that can do that, but.
Do we know people who can do a 3D scan?
Well, I think Leanderwood, Leanderwood, especially Mint, possibly Glen Campbell. There are some folks up north in Norway, Norwich that would, so I think that would be the next step.
So we do a few possibilities for a 3D scan?
And we do. And then we also have possibilities of molds, getting a mold and then getting a replica made from a mold.
Well, like I said, there was that company that I had talked with about some other things out, out in Nebraska that does that. But they, they require a mold to do it. And you have to build, so if you build a mold, send it to them, then they could, but.
Okay, so if we have somebody who can do a mold?
Right. So I think right now, if we can just, if you're okay with Wayne proceeding.
Yes.
He's, he's ready to go.
That boot, that boot is plonked from inside, right? So he's going to run that plumbing back up?
Yep, he's going to replace all the plumbing in it too.
Okay.
And paint it.
Oh, he is going to paint it too?
Because I think he has to strip it, right, to be able to weld anything.
What's that?
Oh, sorry, my voice is terrible. The, he has to strip the whole thing so that he can weld it anyway, so he's got it, somebody's got to repaint it.
Yeah, yeah. I talked to him about that. He's, he, we talked specifically about him painting it, so he's going to.
Where are we going to get a replica? Where would that come from?
That was, that's going to be like part B.
Yes.
The next phase, the next stage.
The first step is to get it.
Yeah. So what, if, you could go with a 3D, but they're going to need this thing back together to do a 3D. They're going to need this thing back together to do a mold. The first step is to get it, this one restored and then decide later what we're going to do. And then, and also depending on how much this costs and what you have leftover funds, that could determine which way you want to go to.
Yeah.
So are we, are we good with this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, right?
Okay.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It sounds as if there won't be a statue in the fountain for the next summer.
It seems like, well, first, I don't know if we have a timeframe or how much.
No, I mean, I'm hoping it'll be there by Memorial Day, like, which is our normal time.
And we were talking about putting it out once it is repaired for that span of time. And then as, you know, winter sets in, moving it. But it's going to be much heavier than it was before.
But if we can get it back out even for the summer.
Yes.
And then when we pull it in fall.
Then, then we can do all the skin.
And then what we can do is see about having a replica made and display the replica from then, then on. But for, for, once it gets repaired, it would be displayed.
And cameras?
I don't know where we are with cameras.
I mean, any of the cameras are beyond where we can put us. Would be just up to the, I think it's pretty much any of the.
Yes.
Um, property, private property owners.
Yes.
And a lot of them.
Yes.
Wallingford House.
Wallingford House has talked about getting a camera.
Yes, they've offered to host a camera.
Yes.
I'm not sure they were thinking of buying it themselves, but if the town wanted to put one there.
And that's what, when summer comes, once we have, we can start wanting else, but that's not.
Right.
We don't want to.
Right.
It's going to be tough to get an angle on that too.
But you can also block and shoot it straight across.
But you still got the tree that, if, unless you're going.
Yes, there's an obstruction.
I mean, that's the way to do it, is put it like a, like a rain camera. Use somebody's wifi to.
For sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
And then you have, you know.
But that's also, if we can, come the summer, first we got to get this fixed, see how much this is going to cost.
Right.
Because cameras are not complicated if once we get to that.
Right.
When Wayne's, Wayne's doing this, is he going to add any kind of gussets or anything on, to actually secure it to the base? So it's not just sitting on it? Because that's what it was before, right? So it had like one little support piece. I can't remember when I picked it up.
He's, he, he talked to Charlie about putting something in the base that would help lift it on and off, because it's going to be so much heavier.
So you put rings on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering if there is some way to also, in that, in his reimagining of it, is to actually have some, even just some little pieces of metal that are going to actually secure it to the base itself.
Bolt down or?
Right, bolt down, so that, with a security bolt or something like that, so that even if somebody tried to push it over this big one, which would be tough, it would be more secure.
Yeah.
So then it's secure the statue to the base or the whole thing to the fountain?
The whole thing.
Yeah.
The whole thing to the fountain.
Okay.
I'm sure it's going to be secured to the base.
You got to put a hole through the.
Got it. I'll ask him about that.
Right, and then just a little bit of angle iron on the sides to be able to bolt it down.
Got it. I'll ask him about that. I'm sure he can.
Okay. Okay. So that is the point of the food update. Our next item is our February meeting. The third Monday in February is President's Day. Town Hall will be closed. Do we want to meet that night or on Tuesday, February 18th?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, it is the 18th.
Oh, it is the 18th?
Yes, because the 17th is Monday.
Yeah, so it is the 18th.
Yes.
So you just want to meet the Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah. I am, I don't know how other people feel. I'm fine with the Monday. I'm going to be around.
But the Monday's.
I'm fine with Monday too.
She's fine with Monday as well.
Yep.
You what?
We're bringing Benjamin for an orthodontist appointment, so.
What?
We're bringing Benjamin for an orthodontist appointment on that Monday, so I'm going to be out about that.
No, I'm, I'm happy to do Monday. I'm going to probably work that day anyway, so.
It's a little, is it a pretty holiday?
Yeah, but I just, I just don't take the day.
You have to get an honorable mention there.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm not doing anything, so I'll be working.
My next class meeting, I don't care.
And is everyone?
We have no input really on this. We can't really say this.
Slime ducts like men here.
So it sounds like everyone's okay with Monday, the 17th?
Okay.
Our next meeting will be on February 17th?
Good.
Okay. Any select board comments or concerns at this time?
Just on what you just said, but I won't.
Hey.
The sidewalk in the state of Vermont, the right of way.
Yeah.
So are we going to find out how wide that right of way is sometime in what, 2027, 2028? Or what are we doing?
The V-Trans is, the V-Trans is the one that brought this to an issue and they're the ones that are researching it.
Let's, I was going to say, we have a solution to that. Well, I mean, not a solution in their eyes, but a solution in our eyes, is consider that a three rod road and put it where the three rod road throws it and be done with it.
All of our designs that are already done.
That's a probably, come on, that's a four rod road.
All of the things we've done for a year and a half on four rod.
Yeah.
So what's, so what can we give?
State's saying, State's saying they think it's a three rod road. This one?
This, this, they're doing, they're doing another intersection project and that group of folks thinks it's three rod. So that's just, they're exploring it.
What were you saying?
I just, I, I am completely baffled by three rod versus four rod. Is that just the width or?
The width of the road. Three rod is the right of way.
27, is it? 29?
29.
What's, what's, our roads are three rod, right?
A rod is 29, a rod is 29 feet, so.
That much less than 50 feet, three rods.
I know ours are, like, the town roads are 23, seven lines are three rod road.
Okay. And so they're, they're saying.
They're saying this, we said it was a four rod, which would put it up to 40 feet, or 30 something.
25 feet from the center of the road.
They did all those surveys and the 3D mapping and everything.
He has all that, so he has, I mean, he did his homework thoroughly.
He had his crazy camera on for that thing. I remember that. That was amazing to watch, but.
Follow that, the sidewalk we have wouldn't be there unless it's in the right way. I mean, are you going to make that?
No, they're going, places are pushing the sidewalk back to the edge of the right of way.
Right, yes, yes.
They're going, they're going to push it back to the edge of the right of way.
Yes.
And move the curve, I think move the curve.
Right, to create more.
Why the park, it's what the proposal is.
Yes.
But what I was saying is if there's a, if we designed it for a three rod, they want to make it a four, let's just build it for a three.
It's the opposite.
It's the opposite. If we've already paid for a four, then we're kind of hosed, you can't touch it.
So I think we just, we just have to wait and see.
We're going to be in the steps, you know?
Well, not quite. I think, they got it, they got it measured out where.
Yeah.
So.
We'll just have to see where it all falls.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Yep, fingers crossed.
Just less lawn involved.
You're, you're on your front stairs, you'll come right to the sidewalk.
Exactly. When I let my dog out, she's just going to ride into the, ride into the road. That's all she needs to do.
No, she's had enough adventures.
No, she's had enough adventures. She definitely has had enough adventures.
Okay. Okay.
Is it, just a, a thinking also, we've talked, we've done like a very preliminary, but of talking about the federal funding freeze. Is there anything else that's coming up or thinking, that we're thinking of doing that we're going to hose? Or that we need, that we know that is federally funded coming up, other than like FEMA things?
The sidewalk is going to be huge because we already know we're 275,000 short. And they wanted us, they suggested us applying for the next round of bike ped grants in March.
Right.
Just for the shortfall.
Wow.
Yep.
But they still think that it's going to be?
No.
Is it just the ADA stuff? Like if they, they roll ADA stuff into DDI, then?
We just have to. Right now, nothing's in jeopardy. They will keep the town posted. I think we're just in sort of a hold pattern right now.
Yeah.
And see where things fall.
Yeah. And anything like in terms of like, when we, thinking like Creek Road Bridge that we've talked about, but we've never been able to really do anything, is that anything that would be federal or? I just, I want to just have an ideas that we're prepared for not having something like that.
That would be, that would be federal.
And we're not even, they haven't even considered it.
But I think, I think transportation stuff is one of the few areas that they're, they've talked about not touching, roads and bridges.
Some of these projects are, I understand, I wish they would.
Okay. So there's other business?
Yep.
I will entertain a motion.
Yeah.
You will adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.